Public presentation. This is my work. I'm the commissioner of the county. Any matter on this? You know. As such, if I am on the first act, I'll run out for the drawing. It's requiring a formal action, not just on this agenda, but on the legislative agenda. Consideration and request. Once a plan is made by at least. Few figures of account. The item being with the deputy general of the city mayor, we're not going to be. Be in the comments on maximum statements. Anybody in the audience? Which is address us on any year than not on the agenda.
Uh, we're just wondering if you. If the time is on the agenda. We want.
Analyst, he is on the agenda.
I do, I do actually have to. No, I was wondering if I can talk to the basket.
And then there's the general plan for the, for the cities. Cities are required to.
Um, where, where can I access that?
Um, either all, should also be on the website.
On the website. And then on, on that, or on your guys' city plan, as I said, what's going to be happening for years to come? Or?
Since it's a general.
Just a general.
Do you need, do you need those handprints?
None.
At the consent calendar, there are five items on the consent calendar. It means to people might eat. New resolution. Establishing these. Stating water rates. A new resolution establishing wastewater rates. Through the cross recovery or payment. About property on Fourth Avenue. The mayor will send a letter to say to you see. Does anybody on the council wish to pull any of these items? Anybody in the public who should pull any of these items? Any units, areas, or emails?
None.
Uh, you entertain a motion to approve this.
I will. And I'll second.
Your motion and second, uh, please go.
Okay. We're not. Yes.
All, all those in here, please say hi. Both. Most passes. For zero. Uh, it's down on page twenty-six in our. So you have. A few members from the council. Um, we, uh. Uh, staff has been working on submission materials to twenty twenty-two C plus three singles. Streets are working with the city of Rata on a regional spring ceiling plan. And, uh, we have participated in. We have all asked for those. Ceiling projects. Um, the city has been in discussions with Caltrans for the repair of the. Uh, the move down Muckler Bridge to the Green Trestle on North End of Town. Um, it does appear that this is a partial retrofit and also replacement. Um, of the green, uh, structures will be renewed and, uh, replaced by. But modern, uh, you know, typical. Bridge apparatus. We are of course a Caltrans, so. The council. Thanks for that. Location. The, uh. As you may have seen, the pay project of initial steps are underway currently. Uh, the city recently replaced two hundred feet of wastewater line. Out there on Bell in preparation for the payment project to fix a relatively short section of, uh. Of line, uh, that was, uh. In need of repair and that so project continues for doing some ADA sidewalk work. Uh, and also some. Wastewater installing work on. Two streets. Uh, in addition, uh, the city was able to. Submit its Measure Z application for this year, roughly four, three to four thousand dollars in Measure Z funding. For the least work. But that I will, the council, see if there's any questions of staff. Counselor, you can roll. Any questions?
Yeah. No questions.
Just one, Kyle, uh, what is, what are, what are we doing over on, uh? Riverside in, in the. Ferment, I should have piped work over there.
Uh, Riverside Ferment, yeah, so that's, that's the wastewater line, so there was about a two hundred foot section that had a belly in it. Uh, so easy to get to replaced. Um, so we included that as part of our, part of the projects that would have to take. Uh, that's in a situation is, uh, is repaired. In addition, we have a new guardrail. Section. Uh, last year. Uh, and they are doing some, uh, work on the triangle.
Thank you. That's all.
Any questions from the other? Any answers?
None.
Safety plan progress. I'm just gonna hand this over to Travis Singleton. The PowerPoint to put up on the screen. And again, if you're just tuning in, we apologize, we have, uh, limited, uh. Visuals inside the council chamber, but the PowerPoints should still show up.
Evening Mayor Captain Johnson and member of the city council. The city of Riedel has recently awarded funding through the council department of transportation to conduct the local roadway safety plan. Or LRSP for the city of Riedel. Federal regulations now require that each state conduct a strategic highway safety plan. Which is a data-driven traffic safety plan according to the effort of a line regular organization. With the goal of reducing traffic accidents and injuries on all our roads. The LRSP seeks to establish goals, objectives, and emphasis areas. And similar methods for local roadways. The LRSP provides a framework for organizing stakeholders to identify, analyze, and prioritize. Roadway safety improvements on local roads are contributing to the success of the latter's strategic highway safety plan. A complete LRSP will be a requirement for you to be eligible. To apply for federal funds such as the upcoming highway safety improvement program. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the council with the progress report of the LRSP highlighting the following items. Revision statement, understanding why we are completing an LRSP and what the report entails. Safety data analysis exploring key collision locations and key collision corridors. Including analysis of the traffic trends that is trapped accidents by year. Prior to collision factors and even the time of day historically accidents are most likely to occur. Collision profiles which were described between apparent risks. And contextual factors associated with notable collision types occurring in Riedel. Community engagement will talk about understanding our LRSP safety partners and the steps the city is taking to encourage and quick feedback from all users of our roadworks. And priority emphasis areas. Which are identifying emphasis areas in the city based on previous traffic accident data. Will allow us to proactively approach and address safety and demonstrate the city's responsiveness to safety challenges. So why complete an LRSP? It's important to understand why the study is being completed and the value this brings to our community. Some examples include the LRSP's ability to provide a framework for organizing stakeholders. To identify, analyze, and prioritize roadway safety improvements on local roads. The fact that implementing an LRSP will be a requirement to apply for future funding for Caltrans highway safety improvement projects. By employing a systematic analysis. A systemic analysis. This allows the city to leverage a proactive safety approach that focuses on evaluating the entire roadway network. Using a defined set of criteria that is reliant on context of the issue rather than drawing a blank. This LRSP aspires towards the survival fatalities and severe injuries of the safe approach system. Which focuses on vehicle safety, speed, road users in design, and those fast dairy. So what is an LRSP? An LRSP provides a framework for organizing stakeholders to identify, analyze, and prioritize roadway safety improvements on our roadworks. Strategic planning is needed to work with and form relationships with safety partners in addition to reaching out to and gathering feedback from the public. Unbased on existing efforts are provided such as presentation streaming. That's based on a systemic and data-driven analysis of traffic collision history in Riedel in previous years. Strategies for education, enforcement, and emergency services are identified along with strategies for evaluation and implementation. A high engineering network ideas completed in project prioritization or local specific engineering recommendations would further. So revision statement. The city of Riedel is fully committed to ending traffic related tests and injuries on the city's streets. And in safety purpose, the city will do our part in enforcement, improve street design. And post collaboration to achieve meaningful results in preventing traffic. Here's some of the top collision locations based on. The, uh, the data received part of the safety data analysis using traffic data dating back to two thousand sixteen. Several key collision locations and corridors were identified. These locations were determined based on accident frequency, minor and major injuries, and traffic collision factors. Several locations on Wildwood Avenue that were determined have a much higher incidence of accidents. Since the intersections of Wildwood Avenue. Davis Street, Dixie Street, and Monument Road. Other locations include the problematic intersection in Monument Road and Pacific Avenue. Berkeley Street and First Avenue in the terminal, Yolowa Avenue and Fern Street. Additionally, collision corridors were identified, which included Wildwood Avenue running Yolowa Avenue to the Eagle Prairie Bridge. Monument Road from Wildwood up to the city limits. Davis Street from Wildwood to Guyerson Lane, Payner Street from Wildwood to Ripley Avenue. And Yolowa Avenue from North Pacific down to Riverside Drive. Based on data from Riedel annual traffic. Report from twenty sixteen to two thousand twenty-one and available collision data from California Highway Control statewide integrated traffic records system. And the transportation injury mapping system. Each reported collision was mapped and analyzed. The data pool consists of eighty-four accident profile which included two major injuries and nine minor injuries. For twenty twenty-one, there were twenty-six reported accidents, including one major injury occurring at Yolowa. And three minor injuries which occurred to the two hundred block of Wildwood Avenue. The Yolowa Avenue and Fern Street Exchange and the Pacific Avenue and Orchard Street intersection. In twenty twenty, there were sixteen reported accidents, no major injuries reported, and two minor injuries were reported at seventy-five and five forty-one. Ten accidents were recorded in twenty nineteen with no major or minor injuries. Two thousand and eighteen saw ten accidents recorded with no major injuries and two minor injuries taking place at one hundred Monument Road and three hundred Payner Street. And in two thousand seventeen, ten accidents were reported with no major or minor injuries. In two thousand sixteen, ten accidents were noted with one major injury occurring right out here in the Davis-Wildwood intersection. Two additional accidents involving minor injuries were reported again at Davis and Wildwood intersection here. And in twelve forty-one to Yolowa Avenue, which is also the location of a major injury in two thousand. The bar graph in front of us shows the traffic accidents by year based on raw data collected. All of the trends appear to show an increase in total accidents rising over time. It is important to note that improvements in the recording by our local police department have also allowed for better data collection. Including the accident report where the primary factors leading to a collision. Unsafe starting and backing was the most pervasive violation in addition to unsafe speeds. Lane change violations. Languageing and failure to yield at an intersection which unsurprisingly saw disproportionate amount of injuries associated. Data collected on time of day, accidents occurred were categorized with the majority of reported accidents taking place between the hours of seven P M and six A M. Accidents were reported the least likely to occur during morning peak hours from six A M to ten A M. A completed LRSP ensures Riedel can meet eligibility requirements to apply for and receive H S I P funds. Completing the safety data analysis, the key components to any LRSP report. And offers a framework for next steps of the LRSP. During the analysis period, the four total accidents were reported. With two percent resulting in major injuries and minor injuries occurring in eleven percent of reported accidents. Four accidents then end up being the result of a DUI, which accounted for five percent of the total reported accident. Included in the safety analysis and a comprehensive breakdown of the primary collision factors. With unsafe starting backing, unsafe speeding, lane change, and right-hand lane violation should be involved in the majority of collisions. Forty-three percent of all accidents reported occurred overnight between the hours of seven and six A M. So what is a collision profile? It describes the collision characteristics and contextual factors associated with notable collision types occurring in Riedel. By identifying profile, we can systematically process. And then proactively identify locations that have similar contexts. Who may not have the frequency of accidents in past years. It is worth noting that an individual collision has the ability to follow under multiple collision profiles. Such as some in the speeding and also above the DUI. Now that we have established the characteristics of a collision profile. The following primary collision factor who studies perfect which includes unsafe speed. Failure to yield to a pedestrian intersection. And driving against things. These primary factors were children-based, not only on the number of collisions. Which we already went out of every four accidents in these categories. But more importantly, how likely major and minor injuries were due to occur. The primary collision factor of unsafe speed accounted for a total of nine or eleven percent of reported collisions. One major injury at the intersection of Davis and Wildwood Avenue were reported. Potential countermeasures that have historically been used to address unsafe speeds. Include vehicle speedback signs. Traffic calming, protected bike lanes. Lane reduction on the area. Vehicles failing to yield at an intersection or to a pedestrian resulted in seven collisions over the reported period. Three of those collisions caused minor injuries to party and all were reported as taking place on Wildwood Avenue. Potential countermeasures include curb extensions, pedestrian refuge weekends. Flashing beacons, and high visibility crosswalks. Four collisions were attributed to a DUI being the primary contributing collision factor. Although the amount of collisions did not compare in number to other primary factors. Those four collisions or five percent total accidents resulted. In two minor injuries, which was twenty-two percent of all minor injuries reported during the data collection. This emphasizes the importance of education, enforcement, vehicle speed, feedback, and traffic calming measures to be taken as potential countermeasures. Community engagement is paramount through all stages of an LRSP. Every person, whether a driver, cyclist, or pedestrian, is a stakeholder when using public roads. The city of Riedel is creating a project link page on the official city website with updates and reports for being added to the list. A community LRSP survey has been released and we encourage anyone to participate. They are located on the city website, have a series of questions to help staff better understand our roads and develop additional areas of emphasis. We have reached out to and hope to continue to garner feedback from the Riedel Fire Department. Riedel Police Department. Riedel School District and Riedel Public Force. Additionally, articles were published in the City of Riedel April twenty twenty-two newsletter. They describe the program and request feedback and participation from all stakeholders. After an initial review of traffic accident data, these factors stakeholders draft with priority emphasis areas will establish. The areas identified were Yolowa Avenue, more dependent to Riverside, Davis Street, Wildwood to Guyerson Lane. Wildwood Avenue with an emphasis on the areas between Hopeco and Dixie Street. Wildwood Avenue with an emphasis on the areas between Berkeley Street and the Eagle Prairie Bridge. And Monument Road from Wildwood to Redwood Avenue. With additional feedback and public input, additional areas can be established. So it stress the importance of community involvement. The stretch of roadway on Yolowa Avenue from North Pacific to Riverside Drive received six accidents according to data with one major injury and two minor injuries reported. Injury collision factors included DUI and languageing. While non-injury profile indicates starting backing or hit run. On Davis Street is another area of interest where eleven collisions were reported from Wildwood Avenue down to Guyerson Lane. The majority, or excuse me, a major injury due to speeding occurred and a minor injury at the same location. Due to failure to yield at the Davis-Wildwood intersection. This small section of city streets on Wildwood Avenue from Hopeco to Dixie Street. Saw seven collisions reported with a minor injury. This is an area of town with a large amount of pedestrian and cyclist activity, so special attention is warranted to this part of that. Wildwood Avenue from Berkeley Street to the summit terminus of the city of the Eagle Prairie Bridge has seven collisions reported, two being minor injuries. The Wildwood Monument intersection has historically been a difficult intersection for users. Due to library factors, speeding up the bridge, and difficulties for motorists entering maybe Monument Road. Failure to yield to pedestrians were the primary factors in both injuries that occurred. And finally, Monument Road from Wildwood to Redwood Avenue been responsible for six collisions, of which two resulted in minor injuries. The narrow speed knot road is challenging for motorists that included unorthodox five-way stop. At Monument or to the Pacific interchange where a minor injury has actually occurred. An LRSP is a living document that will be revisited over the years as the city continues to invest in safer streets. It is crucial to have public and stateful feedbacks which report to be as inclusive and dynamic as possible. Civil countermeasures will be identified as the primary emphasis areas. And additionally, law artists discussed countermeasures will take place. Once the LRSP is completed, we can move beyond the LRSP. To the engineering and design, project funding, and violence. I want to thank you all very much for giving me the opportunity to present the LRSP progress report. And I'd like to make your questions like that.
Counselor, pardon?
No questions, but thank you, that was thorough, um, and I will be filling out that survey as soon as we're done here. Thank you, Travis. Which one is it, Julie? I want that one, I wrote on there, I want that. It's its own picture, yeah, okay.
There was an assortment of pictures from online.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
I have a. Just calling, I don't know, spreads that there were. Five accidents, I was reading on, whatever. I just can't hardly visualize that. Gee, you got any comments about that? The, the average accident in Riedel is, as I explained, our first after dark. And it is usually somebody that you think is DUI, but it's a hit and run, so we don't know. And it's more commonly somebody passing off cars in the avenues than it is out on the road. But I can think of at least two accidents out there, um. On, on basically, you know, areas that were DUIs. One of which was in the west. That's a lot of what gets me, like, because people pull out their garbage and pull out the, the herd. Unsafe backing and unsafe, and unsafe in a highway or same vehicle. So those are the most common accidents. In some ways. You know, it was a bad, and, and part of the. It's just that we're going to see more information related to this document and, uh. You know, all anybody may be a project or do that, uh, comes out. And group. Safety, but everybody on the street. And I, I. I walk, I jog, and I. Fortunately.
Any comments from the public? Any? Any?
On Monument, when you went to the city again, with that one bad corner that you talked about. Where trucks parked and you couldn't see around it. They might have anything that resonates with you.
I mean, you was Peter Redd. It was really, it was, it was really, um.
Okay, presentation, Dismore. Whitefield, cannabis.
Thank you. Council. We've got a brief presentation. Uh, and we recognize the, uh. Public comments. And, uh. Taking action on this particular problem. So the, uh. What we are talking about is prospective taxes, so upcoming, uh, tax payments for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, and council will remember, uh, many years ago now, uh, we went through a very. Uh, elaborate and lengthy process well over seventy public meetings. Uh, a advisory measure of the public of Riedel. Uh, regarding cannabis and the measure X, the cannabis tax for the city of Riedel. In, in this process, what I think folks really need to understand is that Riedel currently is in. Cannabis cultivation of your horror. Uh, know, uh, what you might call legacy growers, uh, in the city of, of Riedel who were grandfathered into the regulatory scene. And so all of our new developers, um. Have come in following the council's hard work in terms of formulating that regulatory framework. Uh, including taxes. Um, so. Since we are talking about prospective taxes. Uh, the current ordinance and regulations allow the finance director of the city of Riedel to adjust the amount of taxes owed. Uh, based on purchases, so that, uh, would be cross, uh, crop losses of their purchases. As the council's aware. Uh, the three Dismore Plateau farmers. Are moving careers regarding the cannabis taxes owed to the city. Uh, this was, uh, due to the current state of the industry, which is certainly problematic. Uh, and reported crop damage, uh, as well. And so those issues are being, uh, handled. Retroactively, uh, with those individuals owing cannabis taxes to the city of Riedel. The. Uh, again, the rules of the, uh. Of what Riedel represents was probably upfront, uh, more than any other jurisdiction. We haven't engaged in a lot of regulatory changes. Uh, one of the things that the council did do early on. As a result of measure X, if, uh, if folks will recall, measure X. Included a cannabis cultivation tax of two dollars a square foot, two to ten dollars a square. Uh, initially, there were discussions of setting that at five dollars a square foot. Uh, and eventually. And eventually, the council settled on two dollars a square foot. And the cannabis community came to this council and said, this level of uncertainty in regards to our cannabis taxation level is something we'd like taking care of. We'd like it locked in at a percentage so that we don't have the vagaries of one year it is two percent, the next year it's six percent, so on and so forth. And the council acquiesced on that and worked with the cannabis community to lock in the two percent and two dollars a square foot tax for cultivations. And with Riedel, cultivation is based on two dollars a square foot. All other types of cannabis activities, non-cultivation, are two percent gross receipts. And that's locked in. So that, so already in this process, the city of Riedel has actively tried to set the rules early and affirmatively without need to, to change them on a annual basis. Another piece of information is on page sixty-five of your packet. And we talk about cannabis taxation in the state of California. The average for mixed light cultivation is approximately four dollars ninety-one cents a square foot. And the average for indoor is seven percent per square foot. And again, the council, city, through the R S voted in by the voters, approved the taxation level that was, you know, two and two. Dollars worth of that. Regardless of the type of mixed light or indoor grows in the city of Riedel. So when you look at the comparison of four ninety-one a square foot to what the city of Riedel currently values, which is two dollars a square foot, the city is on the lower end of the spectrum in regards to taxes. So we do recognize that the cannabis industry is prone to issues. That recommendation on this matter has changed since two meetings have been held in this regard, based on that evidence. Based on that information, to recommend that the city rely on the original ordinance that was created just to maintain the existing two dollars a square foot tax and two percent gross receipt for non-cultivation. And to allow the process to pan out through any appeals process for cannabis cultivation retroactive so that just as we ran through a process with arrearses currently owed to the city, the same process goes essentially apply to the following year without adjusting the tax level that Riedel has set through over sixty or seventy public meetings through advisory measure from the public, through the measure X tax on top of the council locking in the two dollars a square foot rate. Otherwise, the concern is that every single year, we will be negotiating new rates. And in different circumstance, the council's already bound itself, basing the rates above the two dollars a square foot. So that is the staff's recommendation on page sixty-two, which is to not make a current change to cannabis cultivation tax rates of two dollars a square foot. I will say that I think we had a good conversation with all of our developers on the plateau with regard to last year's arrearses issue. And that's how we want to maintain this as a as a friendly discussion about how problems solvable with the cultivators of these particular issues. And so with that, if there's any questions for myself or staff, I'm happy to try to answer them. Mr. Pablo is not available tonight. And otherwise, we recommend opening up the meeting for public.
Any questions, comments? On this time of. Hey, how's everybody doing today? I'm John. Last time I was here, you guys agreed at the census square foot. At two dollars a square foot, the tax is so high that nobody can make money. And I don't know if anybody understands how Carolina works, but like, Humble County, they had an eighty-five percent reduction in taxes, right? And basically, you guys aren't getting any extra taxes, right? So you're paying the same as the previous year now here in Riedel, as, as Humble County. So there's really no way to make money at two dollars a square foot when you're doing one lot a year with no electricity. I don't know if anybody has been on the plateau. We have a dirt road up there. We have to upgrade ourselves. We have no power because your substation is underpowered. Have a one-inch water line supply my whole property through water. So I have no line. I have no power. I have a road that is completely destroyed. And you guys are going to charge two dollars a square foot for cultivating on that property. That is, that is a little high with what I have for you guys to understand what I'm saying. Like, I, I just, there's no way to make money at two dollars a square foot. So with the state licensing fees and your fees, I'm going to be paying over eight hundred fifty thousand dollars this year to cultivate marijuana at a price of three to four hundred dollars a pound. So how do you guys expect me to, how do you expect this crop? I have my property on the market, and every property I own on the market, trying to make this crop work this time. If I need two dollars a square foot for mixed light, one run, it's just not going to work. There's no way. But across the board in California, tax brackets have brought down on cannabis. You might be saying that in Calaveras County where they have power, they have water, they have, you know, services, and they have a commercial setting where you have lighting. Then maybe you can charge two dollars per foot. We don't have power. I applied for power when I first bought my property through P G and E. And they told me six months ago, hey, Riedel's substation is so underpowered, we can't give you a single kilowatt of power. So I applied when I first bought the property. Because that was my main concern. We needed power to cultivate, right? So I applied for power. P G and E backed out and said, you cannot have any power. So I'm basically running my operation on diesel generators, seven dollars a gallon with basically no supplemental air. And you guys are going to charge two dollars a square foot. That is, I mean, talking about wanting something to fail, that's a perfect opportunity to fail at that point. I don't really understand where you guys are coming from. Humble County is reducing it by eighty-five percent, and you guys aren't reducing it at all. Why don't you guys just follow Humble County? They, they've been doing the marijuana thing for twenty years. You guys have been doing it for two. So I don't, I don't understand where this meeting is going, but it's, I mean, I, I have my property for sale right now. I've tried selling it. I've called thousands of people. Nobody wants to buy it because the price of product is down. So by charging two dollars a square foot, you're putting us out of business. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
How's it going? My name's Humble. I am one of the farmers up there. I also own a property share. I look at it as more as an investor. I'll tell you a little bit where I come from and say that we we jumped on you guys' countless hours of not being like legacy farmers. I am a legacy farmer. I've done, put in the work before profit, whatever it is. I have the resources to show that I backed up before. My grandfather didn't own another county where I am. The property that I own up there, I have thirty acres. The permits that I pay is seventy-eight thousand dollars per year, just for the permits. And then I have to pay you guys two dollars a square foot when farming is thirty-two thousand square feet, so that's sixty-four thousand dollars and a half to pay to you guys. Where I'm at right now with the way the industry is, as an investor, I don't see me getting any money in return, so I'm going to slowly start to shut down. Come the fifteenth of this month, I have a ten thousand square foot permit and I'm going to let go. I'm going to have, because I can't afford it. As I, it's me and I have two other employees that work this farm. I can't get electricity until past two, twenty twenty-four is what P G and E has told me. That's the same thing. I'm halfway through my bill. I have only half eighteen thousand square foot actual bill fees I ran on my. The, the price of a pound to sell is three hu- two hundred fifty to three hundred dollars to the, to the district. On top of that, they take a hundred fifty dollars off of that per taxes of state taxes. So I end up with a hundred fifty dollars. Processing fees and in labor, I'm only making five dollars a pound. So to be, I'm, I'm looking at it more, it's not emotional, it's more as an investment. The way that I look at it as if for me to put money into the farm, I do need help. And if I, if I can't get help and resources through grants, through you guys, or through anybody, then it's going to slowly shut down. And then I, then I don't own thirty-eight or something there. And I also own another tenant who's that won't, won't be used for cannabis period. I don't know how to source it for something else. So, I mean, if, if you guys look at it as an investment type, by helping us out, it's going to help us, help us in a community in the long run. By not, by sticking, we're asking for help. We're not asking, I, I know for me personally, I can't speak for everybody else. The help is greatly appreciated because it's going to go farther down the road because of what, where the, what we can generate as revenue, what will come back into the city. You know, as other businesses that I own here, it, it, it generates back into the city, you know. So it, it would be gratefully appreciated to, to at least think about it a little bit differently. But like, well, a couple times, now you're going to come back. This is, it's a real harm, you know. So that's where I stand, and that's where, by, I need help because I treat each business as a separate entity. And if, if I can't find the resources, it's not going to work out for me. I do have another farm that's in Mendocino County. It's completely different than, than this, and that's where I did come from. And I'm trying to build a life here in Riedel. And it, it's for me, if we just come together next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another farmer up on the hill, we need some type of relief. I've already lost ten thousand square feet from the state that they were, they gave me a waiver that let me not have to pay them for the season. That definitely keep twenty thousand square feet. I can't find a relief. You guys, my farmers, my business, easy wash. All we need is just to work with us, let us get back on our feet, work with some kind of way. All the other counties and cities are giving some kind of relief to their farmers, helping them stay on their feet. We need something for you guys. Please consider going back down for fifty cents, at least for a season, two seasons, something to get us back on our feet so we can keep our businesses and our families here in Riedel. If I don't get the relief, this is, and I committed through, I think July was the end of my taxes, whatever I paid up for, and I'm shut down and I'm losing everything. I have everything sale now. I can't find somebody to invest by anything. The business is shot, price per pound large shot, like everybody's are saying, which means that it's down to the lowest it's ever been in history. We just need some sort of support from the city to help us figure out how to get back on our feet, whatever the situation is. Thank you.
I figure I might as well comment that Jonathan earlier. I'm not a farmer, but, you know, I have missions to offer, and I can absolutely agree with these guys. There's a number of issues. I believe the state is actually going to be mopping their, their state fee off here coming down as I can. As you see, they're going to rewrite some taxes, lower things because of all the issues. You know, and another issue too is what if you have, so they got these square footage, what if you have a catastrophic loss in one year as your greenhouse? Are you still going to charge that two dollars per, per, is that written in there?
If there's a catastrophic.
Yeah, so you have a loss on a front. And so, or you can't peel a block because you don't have enough money for getting that money for the year.
There isn't a peel process that was.
So you have to pay it upfront, and then you decide if it gets peeled after that, is that what it is?
So it's, if you document your loss.
Yeah.
We can get it.
Yeah, I, I've been honest, I think the whole station of Riedel is for what people are more harvesting rather than the square footage. I have a really good friend right now with legal bar, but it's not near Riedel, but he can't fill his space right now. He's trying to use some farms off his plants, and he's got to pay all of this, all this stuff. Also, with the taxes, a bunch of things are not write-offs. It would be like for my normal business, any contract, I get write-offs for all kinds of things. These guys are hand-tronged by the state. There's things that should be just blatant cash write-offs that are not. So not only, then they're showing this higher profit, and then it says, it's really, it's bad. So you can make a choice of having this industry die here in town, which all this time has been spent on, or, you know, like I said, the state is going to, is looking to waiver the whole entire cannabis field from here. You know, and there's the grant coming down through to the county, which are being handed to the growers to help pay for the seeds. So it sounds like you've got a choice to make. And I think that the county, if you want the money, you can say, hey, we're going to get this big money grab real quick and screw them all in the end, you know, or work with everybody here, you know? Riedel is trying to step out of their old cycle of longer town, right? And, and into this new industry, a cannabis event here, from what I hear, possibly, and all these clubs, you know? Every bit of relief is going to be needed, you know, and from what I hear from these guys, that's what I hear from many other people in this. I've been to Humble County Grower Association, Association meetings, and heard this same kind of thing from many, many farmers. So it takes everything from below to the county to the state level for this to survive. So even just this down, it's still going to be a struggle. It's not a solve all for it, but. So, anyways, it's hard.
The Navy into the council members, this is a maze for my advice of TR cannabis company here in Riedel. The square footage tax, in and of its sum, is in the bias, and we're attached. Talking about it, I think that's a good place to start. We just expect, I understand, a lot of time of injury success of developing the stat tax with measure X, it's affect. We've been in the cannabis industry for six years when we came to Humble County. And six years later, we have a contract with the city. And the thing that we recognize more than we think is, is finding airplane pilots in Riedel. And it's far from being. You folks can't be rigid in the way you handle development of cannabis in your city. I was surprised as we would come back to the council. I thought it was approved. It confused me. And if I looked at the evidence that was presented and there are even discrepancies in the evidence. It references a mixed light tier one license is for the use of artificial light at a rate of six watts per square foot or less. Mixed light tier two is the use of artificial lights, rate above six or below. Or it should say about, up to twenty-five square watts per square foot. So basically, these farmers here are not growing with electricity. They are in tier one mixed light because of state designation, which says if you do anything with lighting on a plant, it's considered mixed light. It's outdoor, hundred percent, no electricity. These men get up in the morning, every, every morning and every evening, for a period of time to cover their greenhouse. Has nothing to do with light. So the evidence here says that this was for non-electric use. And these farmers using electricity, they're not. These are considered outdoor growers. In the state, they're seen as light deprivation mixed light tier one. Do I understand? So the evidence proof. And here it says, as mentioned in the councils of April nineteenth, the operations of Humble Four by Four, believe the city current taxing is two per square foot. These are very reasonable. Well, they are mixed light tier two facility. And then one here tonight throwing their hearts in their knee. It's a piece of that. They are a different type of grow. They're not the growers on the plateau. And if you folks understood thoroughly, the cannabis industry, you would understand there is a huge difference. It also mentioned the cases in for plateau farms, this reduction of tax payment negotiations. Was a reduction of almost like a thousand dollars. I'm just curious how much is still happening. I believe that you folks should hold up all of the decisions that they made. And not have these three farmers have to come back and wobble again to ask for tax rates that you have already approved. That's what I hear is happening. You folks approve this, I like. Why are we looking to get? Because the evidence does not prove it.
Thank you.
There is a hand raised. There's, there is a hand raised. Can phone number ending nine six eight seven, please unmute themselves?
Yes, hello, this is Kelly Floyds with Margaret Advisors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, this was mentioned earlier, I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. Just to reiterate what was talked about in terms of comparisons, you know, majority of other municipalities actually don't allow outdoor cultivation. They only allow indoor. So the tax comparison was a bit apples to oranges. That's just something to keep in mind. I think it makes more sense to really look at the local tax situation in Humboldt County. As was mentioned earlier, you know, county farmers were provided an eighty-five percent tax on the dollar per per square foot for outdoor. And so not allowing that relief, that kind of relief to Rio del Farmers actually makes them less competitive compared to their county neighbors. And so that's a really important point to keep in mind, just from a business standpoint. And also keep in mind, this is really an emerging market, right? There are lots of investments that are necessary to to build this, these businesses and this industry in this town. And so the funds that would be paid to taxes, they're really needed for these infrastructure improvements. For water, for roads, for more sustainable power. It's not like the tax relief is putting money in these folks' pockets. This is really about allowing them to make the necessary investments to help build their businesses within this town. And allow them to be, you know, on equal footing with their neighbors. So please keep that that in mind as as you consider moving forward. Thank you.
No, I know that.
Thank you back to council.
They're saying that we have decided on. At the last meeting, what was it?
Fifty cent.
Fifty cent. And then we, I wasn't caring about that. Did we decide to vote on that or did we just talk about it?
I believe it was a consensus back to the to the city manager to draft the resolution. Is that correct?
So there wasn't consensus during the last meeting. Okay, now my my question would just be, what 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 has changed?
Yeah, so again, the the. Great comparisons with other jurisdictions. The fact that this opens up a in the world. Discussion as to what the tax rate is set up after what you need. Um, a process to set the tax rate. The ordinance also allows for hardship to be dealt with. By interacting with the finance directors, by interacting with staff. And so having this left of the council. Kind of sets that bar. In the fashion that is not going to be very efficient, it's not going to be very effective. And we have a process in place if through the council's approved ordinance. The management's approved by others to deal with these these.
Councilman Wilson.
Reading through the like, the thing changed somewhat from the last conversation and then was back to staff to. Draft this resolution, but what it appears to me in there is that they dug deeper into the ordinance and they found that there is this hardship issue. That was allowed for the mole, primarily was the mole was the reason, at least in the staff report. That lowered the the existing tax that was not going to be. There was no reduction in the in the existing tax. So a tax that was due and due to be paid for two thousand twenty-one growing season. Was, if I get it right, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but it says it was reduced payments down to a dollar, so it was ninety thousand. So the the city of Rio Del offered and negotiated with the three growers. A deal to lower their taxes by ninety thousand dollars, which just seems like a fair sum to me. Now, what happens in two thousand twenty-two is another issue that has to be negotiated after that season takes place. And I I don't discount, I said in those last meeting when we talked about it, this is a tough industry. And to have not envisioned, this is Mr. Wilson's statement, to not have envisioned that this is where we're headed. I did a lot more research from this time and. I I know I did a lot of research back when we had our seventy meetings, but some stuff that I've been currently looking at. There are two farms in the state of California. I don't, they're they're farther south from here. Each of those runs about five hundred thousand square feet and they're rated at three percent of the market. One of those, one of those farms is anticipating adding five and a half million more square feet to that grow, to their growing capacity. If they do that, that five and a half million times, multiply it out on a three percent. They're going to add an additional thirty-three percent to the growing market. This market isn't going to, in my opinion, is not going to, is not going to magically grow into its, at its blooming. Two thousand, three thousand dollar a pound. Hybrid, hybrid products, what I understand, go for some pretty fair sums. Is it outdoor grow? Probably not, more than likely indoor. But the growers up here that invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this location. Knew what they were getting into. They were, if they trusted P G N, I'm I'm sorry that they did that. P G N has let a lot of people down throughout this state and has. Let's stop here for my opinion tonight. But that's a tough, it's a tough market to be in. I don't see it getting a whole lot better as I, as I said before. I think the city has has been fair. And also talking to locals constituents of this city, if if nothing else, I speak for possibly a minority of the city. That have a very strong feeling, as I'm stating, that you knew where you were going, you knew what you were getting into, you knew it was a tough market. And I'm sorry, but. People fail in business if they don't do it right. And I'm not, I'm not here to solve your problems. I'm here to see what's equitable for our city. And what's equitable for the other citizens in this community. That's my comment.
My turn now. Uh, thank you all for being here. I also just kind of want to echo what Kyle said that we. Have stipulations in there for open communication and I think what it calls for is open communication between the city and the growers. And because we already entered into agreements for our. That's us holding up our part and to go off of Frank was saying too. With the measure X being voted in by voters and stuff, it's like we have a responsibility to hold up our end of the bargain on that, on the measure X thing too. So I'm personally going to go with staff recommendation on this. As we've delved deeper into the ordinance to kind of find out that we, we do have some wiggle room in there. It just has to be used appropriately by both sides. So that's me. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I heard is that. We are going to stand by our original ordinance for resolution of. Two dollars per square foot. It's incumbent on growers that when you have issues, to come to city hall. And not to city staff about your issues. And we have made a combination for you in the past. Sounds like we'll need to make a combination for you in the future, but it has to be. And so here are summary, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, so the council does not have to take any action on this.
Thank you. Did I comment on this or?
I I would have a question for verification for this as well.
Well, we'll take a big question first.
You mentioned that they will prove, so maybe the reduction will prove. I'd prove on what? Because income prove the profits of mold experts, that makes no sense to me.
Well, prove the mold. No, I'm going to say a hardship.
Okay, hardship, okay, so.
I think I'm going to ask the board again in the chair.
What's hardship?
I think the item is close at this point, so there are, you know, opportunities certainly to answer questions.
Oh, I just want to say, I think, I think it's kind of a shame that. You guys are willing to do this. I'm not even involved, I mean, I feel for all these guys. You can't build a crop in bed. To say that like it's a business decision that like you should have made better plan is, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense. But the guy that pays the most money in this whole entire city is spending this at two dollars. When you're having a whole community up here saying, hey, give us this relief or we might go out of business. So it sounds like you're going to lose that revenue stream completely. I don't know, you know? That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Johnson. This is a standard item that is referring to the time meeting. Staff would recommend. The option fifteen thirty-seven to version two, which would be to. Fifteen thirty-seven to. Continue with hybrid.
It's box version one, right? I think that's a good idea. We need to fix Mr. Al, but he what his tongue etiquette is, but. I think it's good that we have the hybrid and have and have the, we're able to do the in session live people. It's still good.
Is there a motion, Councilman Carter?
Like the hybrid, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion. I don't know, I'm just doing it all at once.
All right, Mayor Proton Johnson? Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson? Councilmember Woodall?
Are you voting for zero? Be consistent with.
Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, Mayor Johnson Johnson, the council. I'm here, we're going to recommend that pulling aside and continuing into the next meeting. While hopefully be available to present on these.
Council reported some conversations.
Okay, we had a nuisance payment committee meeting, third Wednesday of last month, whatever that date was. So it was nice to have everybody back together again and I'm happy to say it seems like we're making some good progress on things. And I think you all might notice this car that's been parked outside of six eleven Marwood has been moved and the guy has been rehomed. And that was a big victory, it felt like. He's been there a long time. I also had a town cities transportation, communication and public works committee meeting. That's a mouthful. And so there was nothing super, you know, important coming down the pike on us or nothing that applies to real specifically. But I will let you know when and if that does happen. Thank you. I'll be there on Friday, yep.
Councilman Wilson?
I think I have a RCA meeting since the past. I'm reasonably sure of it. The one of the things that was just hard to hear him out is that they both, they came up with some, I guess they call realistic figures that the offshore wind. Project wouldn't be completed until, functional till year two thousand thirty. Which in the meantime, Oregon and Washington are in the process to do an offshore wind. So that one of the feelings of supervisor Bong was that they would, they would pass, we had been the lead agency that was doing this. On the, pretty much on the California or on the west coast. That we would probably be surpassed by Oregon and Washington, even New York. To get this done because of California regulations. And so I hear that a lot. And it seems like everything we do, we hear this California regulations. And I don't have an answer for it, nobody on the boards could have an answer for it. How you deal with it, it doesn't rock with the Californians. Anyway, that's just, that's kind of hard.
Two weeks ago, I announced that. Ten marks and I would be. Reestablishing some of the. Thanks to the city crews, the W orders and equipment. We found thirty-six, cleaned them all out. Unfortunately, we missed one in front of Judy Myers business. So it's there to be done, but there's potential for another thirty plus fights on several forty days. So I have a travel into the church. Some of us.